To ease the nerves.
Okay.
Tell me about Mr Archibald Pickles.
Thank you for bringing him up today.
Just to start fresh.
Uh, he is.
brag about the pooch.
Oh, he's just gorgeous.
The, the handsome young man.
So he is three years old and he is supposed to be a Maltese Shih Tzu. Um, but I picked him up from a family. Uh, and I don't think that's what he is because he doesn't look anything like one. So I don't actually know what he is. I've gotten like Tibetan Spaniel. Um, or King Charles Cavalier.
Yeah, I can see some of the, from memory from the pictures.
Yeah, he's, and he's a very sweet boy and very friendly.
Yeah.
The day that I picked him up, he was very happy and friendly and just always very outgoing. So yeah.
Excited to go to a new home?
Yeah.
Or excited to meet you?
Yeah, I think so. Oh, he's just excited to meet it. He's not one of those, like he's, he could just be left with anybody and be happy. Like he's not particularly picky on people. He's just loves people. Well, he doesn't like being alone though.
Socially grateful.
Socially grateful.
Yeah, alright, alright. I like that.
Yeah.
I have cats.
Have you got a cat?
Yeah, yeah. We, um, had her being babysat while we were away in Queensland and it was like, because we had a group chat, some of our, two of our friends were looking after her and we're like, if you're lucky, send us a photo.
Okay. If she graces you with her presence. Yeah. So yeah, Archie's very photogenic and, um.
I, yeah, because I did his quick squish three Instagram. I was like, there he is.
Yeah, he's very prevalent. He's very prominent on my Instagram. I always try and do a cheeky little funny photo at the end of my, um, my photos. Yeah, but they're the best. I think, yeah, having pets are just the best.
Welcome to Bridge by Words, the podcast where aspiring leaders connect with experienced politicians, gain insights and inspiration for their own political journeys. Today I'm joined by councillor Katerine Theodosis of the West Breen Ward. And I had to drive through there the other day.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where did you go?
We, or maybe, no, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong ward. No, there was this, um, no, I went to the doctors. That's right.
Nice.
So I did go through, I went to the doctors. There we go.
Very good. Yeah. Good old Paco.
And then we drove up to Glenroy and got food there.
Very nice. Yeah. A lot of good, uh, local food places around there.
Yeah, I saw that really cute, um, it's like this little street eatery thing and they had like a neon sign and everything. Can't remember what it was.
Was that in Glenroy?
Like a, yeah, in Glenroy, this Turkish street thing.
Oh, was that on the corner of Pascavale Road?
Think so.
Yeah, I've seen that. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We had to walk through there. Um. So I've gone and shot myself in the foot. I was meant to ask the dog thing after the introduction, I guess, to keep the flow going.
Well, we can ask it again. We can, we can edit it. We can do whatever we want.
Do whatever we want.
Yeah. It's your show.
What we can do, we'll just start, start the flow.
Okay.
And then I've got little notes here. We'll start with you.
Okay.
Life before entering.
Okay.
The councillor political public life, public office role.
Sure.
Um, so before politics, um, what were you up to? And what did a normal day look like for you?
Um, well, I sort of, I joined the party in 2017. Um.
Which party?
The Labour Party. The red.
Yep.
As you can see. Um, and I mean, before that, I was studying, I think back then. I was, I'm pretty sure working in retail. Um, I grew up, was born and raised in Pascavale, which is part of the area that I represent in West Breen. Uh, I'm also the daughter of two Greek migrants who moved to Mary Beck in the 1970s to, you know, build a better life for me and my family. And I grew up always, I think more aligning definitely with the Labour Party's values. I think, you know, both my parents being migrants, my mum was a teacher, my dad was a mechanic. Both of them were members of their unions growing up. And I was never really, I was always someone that wanted to do something that would make a difference. I never, I don't think I ever really pictured myself being, you know, in politics as a, as a kid or as a teenager, even in my early twenties. Um, but I knew I wanted to do something that would make a difference. And then, uh, I went to uni and started to learn a lot more about, um, different issues, particularly around social justice issues and got quite passionate about that. I went to my first ever rally in my first year of uni. I think it was my first year of uni, um, which was.
Yeah.
Uh, we were rallying against Tony Abbott's cuts to higher education. And I, it wasn't in any sort of party or anything. I, I just attended that with some friends.
You were a mad uni student. Was like, no.
Yeah, I was mad. Yeah. Cause it just felt really unfair. And I think, it really did have a lot of impacts into the future as well. I mean, I ended up doing, um, a post grad degree and I think a lot of students, a lot of their hex debts are just out of control. Um, and by taking a lot of funding out of unis, you know, that really did affect particularly a lot of, I guess, teachers as well that were at unis at the time. Yeah, it felt really unfair. Um. And then as I started to get more involved, I had a friend who was one of my closest friends who we went to high school together. Um, he was involved in the Labour Party and I was sort of talking to him about, what my values were and where I sort of sat and that, you know, I, I felt like I really did want to get involved a bit more. And so, I started just going to events. Um, I was really lucky that I had him to go with. And felt like, yeah, this is, this is right for me. And then I just sort of got, got involved from there. And then, ended up, before I ran for council, I ended up volunteering, way back when I first joined. I was, I would volunteer for different elections and do the handing out and, um, phone banking, door, door knocking, all that stuff. And then I ended up working in an electorate office, which was really incredible experience and.
For those who don't know, what's an electorate office? What's that like?
So that's your local MP, so your member of parliament, they have, uh, what's called an electorate office. So all their staff work from there and you would, take care of things like, um, you know, Centrelink issues, or if people are having issues with their aged care packages or, um, you know, helping people with immigration issues, that kind of stuff. Uh, even just, you know, working with local sporting clubs. Um. Yeah. And I think that gave me a real sort of taste of what being in politics is like and really on the ground kind of work. And then from there, I also went and worked, uh, as an advisor to a, a state government minister where I worked in multicultural affairs and housing as well. And that was really, really cool experience as well, getting to work with the minister and, um, you know, prepping them for parliament and, uh, getting to work on policy as well, which was really cool. Um, yeah. And then I ended up, I feel like I'm sort of jumping ahead.
No, if you need to, but what, what, I will pause. What's, what's that like? Um. For me, I'm genuinely, genuinely curious.
Yeah.
Being what you, like you said, an advisory position sort of thing.
Um, yeah.
What's, what was it?
An advisor.
Advisor.
Yeah.
Anyway, so yeah, that's the title. Uh, no, what's the, being an advisor in, was it this within the electorate office or working for the state member that you said?
That was then working for a minister. So I worked for a, uh, a member of parliament and then I went off and worked for a minister.
Okay. So then with that, um, what does that job entail? What's the involvement? Like, what's the day to day?
Yeah, a lot of it's, you work with the department a lot. Um, a lot of it's sort of briefing up the minister on issues that are coming up. Uh, part of it's also prepping them for parliament. Um. You would also work with a lot of different stakeholders, like particularly in multicultural affairs. I worked with, a lot of, um, community groups and understanding what issues were impacting them so that we could, you know, work on really life-changing policy as well and legislation. Um, yeah. And so that was really interesting. Um, yeah, I really enjoyed that.
So it's more being on the ground and talking with the people, the members of the community. So you can be more well-informed to advise, as the, the job title says, to advise the minister. Yeah?
Yeah, pretty much. But, and then also working with, there's a range of different stakeholders. You would also work with, um, the departments as well, because they're sort of a separate arm to, uh, the minister's office. And so, yeah, you would kind of work with them and liaise with them, um, to advise the minister as well. Yeah, I felt like it was one of those jobs where every day felt different. You're always doing different things. There's always so much going on and you're having to respond to different things. So, very fast-paced, but it was really rewarding. And I felt like, yeah, you were, I guess, on a, um, a bigger sort of overarching level, making a difference, which is, which was really cool.
What, so what is that like? How, how does, how does that feel being a part of it? I think you briefly mentioned there, but it's like a very rewarding.
Yeah, it was really rewarding. Um, it felt surreal sometimes. And yeah, it was kind of high pressure and having to learn a lot all the time. And, you, you have to learn a lot about particular policy areas. And yeah, I think getting to contribute to policy and legislation in that way was really rewarding. Yeah, I did really enjoy it. Um, but then I got to a point where I've, was kind of, it can be very unpredictable as well.
Yeah.
Cause a lot of things change, you know, if there's a reshuffle in the ministry, for example, if your minister's portfolios change, your job could change overnight. Um, and so that's kind of what then led to me running for council was because there was a reshuffle. And my minister's portfolio has changed and I was, kind, I was, I remember it was like my birthday and I was out and I'd seen some friends and they were all, who were also involved in the party. And one of them grabbed me and was like, I'm going to say something a bit crazy. And you're probably going to say no, but I just want you to promise me that you'll at least consider it. And I said, okay, what is it? And I think it was like, I think I mentioned this before, but it was my birthday. So I was in a good mood and, you know, but I also was like, oh, I think my job's going to change. I don't know if I'm going to, stay in the same job. So it was kind of a weird, uh, transitional period. And this was in the end of 2023. And he was like, I think you should quit your job. And I think you should run for council because we need people to run and we particularly need someone to run, in, you know, Pascavale and Hadfield sort of area, you could run there and, um, you know, you're a local, you grew up there, you understand that area. You should totally consider running. And so I thought, and I just remember feeling, as he said that, I was like, yeah, that sounds like a really good idea. And then I just, it's like, I'm going to do that. And it just felt really right in that time. Um. Yeah, I think it's really funny when your, your gut sort of just tells you that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, yeah. The whole body is just saying, do it.
Yeah, I was like, yeah, that's a great idea. I, and I never would have thought of that, to do that myself. Um. And it was such a huge jump to just be like, yeah, I'm going to leave my job and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that because that's, that sounds really cool and like an incredible opportunity. And I'm going to put my hand up and just go for it.
You've, you've lived there forever. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
You've been, you've been a child, you've grown up in the area. So I think you do qualify as someone who does know their community pretty well.
I do know it pretty well.
Yeah, that does sound like a really solid foundation to, um, base your experience or have, have that solid experience. That does sound like a good foundation. Um. So was it just the friend and them pushing you to do it and your love of community? Or was there something else that like, made you feel like you needed to step up and be a part of it? Cause I know you mentioned there was like council jobs and stuff like that. And there was a bit of that instability when cabinets shuffled or ministers shuffled. Um, but yeah, was there anything other than those factors that pushed you into going for it?
Yeah, I think I had felt for a while that, uh, I really wanted to see, someone who could represent our community's views and really take that to a council level. I think, I could see that there was, um, a lot of concern in the community about the way council at that time, had been dealing with certain issues. And I felt like I could, I was like, yeah, maybe I could be someone that, can represent my community in the best way that I can. And really make a difference it to people's lives in that way. And so, and I felt like it was just, that's a really good next step of, the, a way that I can really make a difference and contribute to my community that, you know, made me who I am. And, you know, when my parents moved here from Greece, they, you know, they were able to give me the opportunities that, that they didn't have. And so I was really grateful, for that. Um, and so it felt like, I could give back in that way, but also I could actually represent my community's needs, in a way that maybe other people couldn't. And so I, I really felt like that was the right thing to do.
Solid answer.
Thank you.
Now, your parents provided that for you and you would like to help provide that in return that to the community.
Yeah. And I think the community provided that for my family as well. You know, it's like, it's so incredible that Australia does have this rich, diverse and multicultural community where, you know, my parents could move here and then I could have these amazing opportunities. You know, I had, um, I went to a public school my whole life. I had access to free healthcare, you know, those kinds of things that are, really crucial to someone just being able to start a new life in this country. And I had, I had those opportunities and I was so, I think I always felt really grateful for that. And I think my parents really installed that, instilled that in me, of that I'm so lucky to be, have been born in this country and get to, um, have the opportunities that they didn't have. And so I always felt like I wanted to, give back in some way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The appreciation and the gratitude of things that we get to take for granted essentially.
Yeah, yeah. Like I'm so lucky that I had, you know, free, education essentially, and it was an incredible education. I went to Pascavale Primary School and Strathmore Secondary, all, you know, local schools as well. And I was just lucky to have that, you know? And I don't take that for granted. And I think, um, yeah, that was a big reason why also, I think, led me to really aligning with the Labour Party in that way as well of, those values really meant a lot to me.
Keep, keeping those, I guess, the, the cornerstone bare minimums that people need to, to pull themselves out of survival mode.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, on the, on the Greek background thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did see on your Instagram, there was the sister city of Sparta.
Yes.
Um, could you tell me more about that? What does that mean?
Yeah.
Or does that mean to you? Or what's the, the whole, cause yeah, you've got the Greek background.
I've got a Greek background. Yeah. Um, so Mary Beck, uh, has had a sister city relationship with Sparta. For many, many years. Um, a lot of Greeks and Italians and, um, Turkish, you know, all different kinds of backgrounds. But a lot of Greeks did migrate to Mary Beck in particular, in the, I think the sort of 1950s and 60s. Um, and a lot of them helps build this community with, you know, working in factories, working really hard and, um, you know, running local businesses. And I think that was really recognised through that sister city relationship.
Yeah.
And then there was, um, so there's the Pelaconian Brotherhood in Brunswick and they have that really, close relationship with the sister city in Sparta. And that's all, you know, the Greek community and they're really vibrant and just incredible, really passionate people. Um, and they, we even have a, a Sparta place in Brunswick where we have a Leonidas statue. To honour, uh, our sister city relationship. And I think that's really important, particularly for community groups like the Pelaconian Brotherhood that, um, yeah, get to have that relationship and, and it's, you know, cultural, economic ties that are just really important to our community. Um, and, uh, Mary Beck had recently done a review into our sister city, uh, relationships, to see if they were still active or still needed. Um, and there had been, a recommendation that it wasn't active and it wasn't needed. But I think there was a misconception that, you know, just because councillors or council itself isn't involved in the sister city, doesn't mean that the community isn't. So, you know, you've got the Pelaconian Brotherhood and other community members that are from Sparta. I think there was also a really big, uh, migration from Sparta itself into, um, Mary Beck. And so I, what I heard from a lot of community members and what I felt as well was that, no, we should absolutely keep this citizen, sister city relationship because, whilst council officers or council itself might not have a super active relationship with Sparta, it's something that the community has. And so we should keep that.
So it's community-led, but it's endorsed by the government, council.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't cost council anything. Um, it's just, you know, it's, and it's, it's symbolic, but it's, I think also a recognition of, uh, the hard work that Greek migrants put into building our city and our community.
Yeah, okay. Um, so then that, leads into, I think you've got the, is it a portfolio? Whatever it is, the, the, what do you call them in council?
Yeah, we've got like.
Multiculturalism. That's, that's on your, that's on your resume or portfolio or what's it called?
Yeah, I think it, there's two of us that are, that have multiculturalism, but I, yes, one of them is.
Yeah, two of them. Cause I know that you and Helen share the sports and rec.
Yep, we've got, yeah, there's, I've got sports and rec, gender equity, and I've got multiculturalism.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's that like on the council front? Having that on your, things to, to be involved in or participate in or, what is it? What does that mean?
Um, I think for me, it's a specific, like specifically with multiculturalism, we, we are, you know, we say we're, um, one community proudly diverse. And so.
Doors.
It's on the doors. Yeah, it's on everything. So I feel like that's such a big part of our communities that we are so diverse and our multiculturalism, is so important. And, um, keeping that, uh, thriving and alive and supporting those multicultural communities is really important to me because I think, I was always raised that, you know, I should, feel really grateful and lucky to have been born in Australia and raised here. But I should also feel really proud of, my heritage and where, where my parents have come from. And I should never have to choose between the two and that I can celebrate the two and that, I can keep both of those things alive as well. Um, and I just think that, yeah, I think it's really important that council does as much as it can to help foster that. Yeah. Because I think that's the best part of our community.
Yeah. So examples of that is endorsing these sister city and like.
Yeah, supporting community groups, um, you know, holding, hosting events or, yeah, all that kind of stuff. Really important. Understanding their different needs as well, having, um, in language materials so that when we're communicating, uh, you know, if we've got services as well, making sure that they're culturally appropriate. Um, having translated materials so that, um, particularly for elderly migrants, so that they can understand, how certain things might be affecting them or how they can access certain, um, services as well. Um, yeah, I think those things are really important.
Don't you sure no one feels left out?
Yeah.
And yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And can participate. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, cause I know that there's newspapers out there and you can, uh, there's a Greek newspaper over there.
Yeah.
If you've seen it.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, there's on the way, there's where, there's where they've got the Brunswick Bulletin and all the other newspaper, community papers and stuff like that. And then I think there's a Greek speaking one over there. Um, so jumping into these role, into this role, putting your hand up, uh, and committing to the electoral, like the, you know, the campaigning process. Um, was that scary or more of a why not moment sort of thing?
I think in the moment I felt, it felt really like the right thing to do. It's definitely, it's scary putting yourself out there, um, for sure. And, it's, I, I sort of, I remember it was the day before, it might've actually been the day that they were counting the ballots. I remember just saying, my God, who would vote for me? Like, I was like, what have I done? Like, this is crazy. But then I was like, anyway, I was obviously put in a lot of hard work and.
Yeah.
Obviously a lot of, uh, uh, majority of my community ended up supporting me, which is, I'm very grateful and feel very privileged, um, to get to, to do that. But yeah, it is scary. But I think I would encourage anybody who, feels like they want to make a difference, feels like they want to represent their community. I would say, just go and do it. Like, even if, I, I think I tried to focus on not the outcome, but just the why I was doing it. I was like, you know, even if I don't win, that's fine. This is just a really cool opportunity. And I get to be a part of something and that's really cool. And I get to, I got to have so many, just so valuable conversations with, um, different people when I was at door knocking, um, or, you know, phone banking. And you get to meet really incredible people that are really inspiring. And then that also makes you feel like, oh, I really want to do this so that I can help people like that. Um, yeah. So I would say it is scary, but I think it was worthwhile. I think it worked out. So that was good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So on, on that, like you said, um, some really lovely moments, speaking with members of the community. Um, any that still stand out to you or moments that maybe deepen your value for the community or?
Yeah, I think, I mean, there's so many people in our community that, that.
I know there's a lot to pick from. Don't feel jealous if she doesn't say your one.
So sorry. Um, I, yeah, I think just the people that, um, really make a difference, you know, meeting aged care workers that have helped thousands of, elderly people be able to stay in their homes a lot longer than they maybe could have if they didn't have that support. Um, you know, you're meeting maternal child healthcare nurses who, um, you know, have probably, looked after so many babies and kids in their life. Um, and, teachers who, you know, uh, helping the next generation, like, and just give up so much of their own time and energy, into supporting those students, um, was amazing. And I think also going to local sporting clubs and just seeing, like just the commitment and hard work that's, you know, whether it's committee members or parents that they put into, they're helping their community thrive through sport that, you know, I think helps a lot of kids and mentally and physically, is so important in our community. And they just give up all their time and they just, want to, you know, contribute to our community in such a selfless way. I just thought, wow, like, that's incredible. That's inspiring. And that's, yeah, something that I think I wanted to see council really supporting more of as well.
Beautiful answer.
Thank you.
No, that, 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 I don't know. That does resonate me and I'm left speechless in a sense. Cause it's like, it's those people that, you know, everyone contributes and everyone builds the community. But, the examples you gave there was like, you know, the people who are bringing life into the community, literally, literally holding the baby. Um, people who are maintaining that, that longevity of the community, like elderly people helping them out. Um, and teachers sculpting in the middle there. But no, it's, yeah, all right. And then plus the community sports things.
Yeah.
Changing tone or anything? Not really. But let's, what would, what would have been the toughest part of this journey so far?
Um, I think, uh, it definitely takes a lot of time away from friends and family. It's a big commitment. And that's really hard. Um, I think, being, you know, a young, particularly a young woman, putting yourself out there in that way is also quite intimidating.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're really, um, putting yourself out there and, you know, the whole, um, imposter syndrome and, feeling like you've really got to prove yourself is really hard to manage. Um. And yeah, I think it's, um, I think you, you've also got a, as well.
No, you're all right.
I just had a mental like, um, I think it's the, the toughest thing as well. When I started on council was, you've got to make these really, really big decisions and they can feel like, really intense and everything's riding on, you know, these decisions. And you can kind of feel like, no matter what you do, someone's going to be upset or you can't always get the, the outcome that you want or, you know, you feel, like you're really trying to change something, but it's not quite going the way that you want it to. And that can, that can be quite overwhelming. But, uh, I think in those moments, something that I've really learnt, not learnt, but, and I think it, it feels quite obvious, but I think when you're in these kind of really high pressure environments, we have to make a big decision. Um, I try and just go back to what my values are and what my principles are and just, trying to keep that in mind. And also just keeping in mind that, at the end of the day, people in my community, they did, you know, they put their faith in me to represent them the best way that I can. And so, when I'm in that chamber, when I'm making, you know, when I'm in a briefing or I'm making a decision, it's like, I've got those, like, all of that is in my mind and that I actually just need to cut out all the sort of extra noise and just think, I need to make a decision for them. And they put their faith in me. And so I've just got to, trust in my own principles and my own values and know that that's what I'm taking in there with me and just like, butt out all the rest, I think.
Yeah, okay. And try to focus on, you know, trying to find the balance.
Yeah.
Like you said, there was, any decision you make, no matter what, there's going to be someone who's disappointed or upset.
Yeah. And that's hard because you don't go into this wanting to make people upset. You go into this because you want to make people's lives better. Um, but that's just the reality of, I guess, politics and, um, and making really big decisions. But as long as I can, you know, stick to my principles and what I actually just believe in. And I'm consistent in that, then I think that's just kind of the best that you can do. And also I think, engaging and consulting with community and talking to as many people as you can. And also I think engaging and consulting with community and talking to as many people as you can so that you can get an idea of what your community actually cares about, um, is really important as well.
Cause I wanted to touch base, because of previous interviews I've had and the whole point of this project that I'm doing um, is to gain insights from different people, different backgrounds or whatever. But of those people who represent us, not all whatever. Anyway, but more importantly, it's more like for, th- this isn't a part of that, but for example, the difference between, like, speaking with Helen and she felt that the importance of being an independent was great for her, her community. Um, I would have, I would like to maybe talk to you about the counter of that, if anything, you know, because you're a part of the Labour, Labour Red, woohoo. Um, it's recently after the election, but no, so, uh, so, yeah, uh, but no, just like, what's the, what's that, what's the difference, I guess? Having that backing of a party or is it even a backing of a party or what's that like coming into this council position? With this, this, this umbrella of a political party?
Yeah, I think for me, um, I think the, I think it comes down to the individual, I guess. I mean, everybody, whatever you feel like you most align with. I think for me, when I ran for council, I did get asked about that from residents of.
Sorry to ask again.
No, that, no, it's a great question. It's important. Um, of, you know, what's the difference between having a councillor that is a member of, of a political party versus an independent? And I said, for me, I think the value in that is, you know, I mean, I have a party platform, I have specific, you know, I mean, roughly, you know where I stand on certain issues. So, I mean, you know, it comes to workers' rights. You know how I'm probably gonna vote or when it comes to, you know, universal healthcare and, and um, you know, public schools. I mean, I guess those aren't council issues, but just generally, you know what my values are as a, as a Labour Party person. Whether or not you agree with them or not is a, is a different thing, but I guess that's kind of the value of, of having someone that's part of a political party. And I think the second thing is being in a party, particularly a party of government, means that I get to be involved in conversations that will actually make a difference and that, you know, I can, um, you know, advocate internally for changes that matter to our community. And I think um, I think for some people, there, I think there is a lot of value in knowing that your local representative can be inside the tent representing your views inside the decision-making tent versus uh, someone who might be on the outside who might not be able to actually influence that change. And so I think there is value in being inside party and being able to make that, that change internally versus being on the outside and not really getting to. And then the third thing is, I think, uh, I've felt very lucky in that in, inside, you know, being in a political party, I've been able to make lifelong friends, have really incredible mentors that can help you navigate this kind of world and keep you grounded and give you advice when you need it. And that's, I think, really hard to come by. Um, otherwise, because it's such a, it's such a, it's such a unique role, um, not a lot of, it's, it's kind of hard to get that advice unless you've been in it, I feel. Um, but then I also think on the flip side, it's good to have people outside of this that can also keep you grounded. Um, so you don't lose perspective and get all consumed by it all. So I think having that balance, but I, I think that there is value in uh, being inside and having those really good mentors and that support as well. Um, yeah, I would say those three things are the main reasons. Yeah. And I, I think as well for us on council, um, at least for the Labour councillors, we don't, we've sort of made our own decision where we don't bind on anything. So we can vote, I mean, when we have, like, we vote differently on things in the past and we have voted differently on things because we represent different communities. So we've sort of made that conscious decision. And so, yeah, I think it's, you kind of get the benefit of the predictability of knowing what my values are, where I stand on particular issues, roughly who I am and what my values are because of the party that I am a part of. But then at the same time, I can also make decisions in council, um, based on just what I think my community needs and would want.
So is that, is that a decision that, um, you and the other Labour ca- uh, councillors have made? To, to allow yourselves to have that independence, especially on the council, community level?
Yeah.
Compared to, you know, we all, like, the federal level, it's, all right, we're all Labour, we all vote the same.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that's a positive? That's a, a net positive?
Yeah, I think so. Um.
And important?
Yeah, I mean, we've, that's just kind of the, the decision that we made and I think it is good because we do represent different communities. And I think, um, it allows us to be able to make those decisions in a really clear way. Um, yeah, so I, I think it is a good, a good thing and um, yeah.
Yeah, uh, and I wanted to touch, I think it was number two, uh, that you said, there was, it helps when there's a level of cohesiveness between different layers of government when there is a party. For example, we've got Labour State Party in at the moment. Is that the right way to say it? Labour State Party? No, anyway.
State member, yeah.
State, yeah, yeah, the state member, Anthony. Um, and does that make it easier to let him know, at least if it's a state issue, to convince someone higher up?
Well, I think it, so in the Labour Party, we've got.
State issues that affect the community. So that's what I mean, yeah.
Well, we've got, yeah, we've got things like, we've got, uh, local branches. And anyone that's a member can come along to those branch meetings and you can debate things, you can move motions, you can raise issues. And so yeah, I think there is that level of, you know, I could go to a local branch meeting and, and raise an issue that I know is impacting my community. And I could make that representation to other people that are also, um, you know, that might be there that are also elected representatives and it's more, you're more likely to kind of be able to have that conversation in those environments than I guess you would if you weren't involved in a political party. And so I think there's, yeah, there's value in that as well.
And then with that, having that collective group with the branch meetings and all that sort of stuff, you mentioned on number three, uh, mentors. Is there anyone in particular that really helped guide or shape or mentor you in anything? Doesn't have to be a political person or, you know, Helen, it was her mum, you know, anyone who helps uh, mentor her and um, give her that sense of value towards or I don't know, I've lost words, but more importantly, any mentors that helped guide or shape you?
Yeah, I think having mentors is really important because you're like I said, you're, you're making really tough decisions and even just having someone to just remind you of, you know, what are your values? What are your principles? What do you believe in? When you are having to make those really tough decisions, but I think, and mentors is really important. I think when I first joined uh, politics, I had someone say to me, you should have five mentors in your political career. I think I would expand that to say you should have mentors and just people that you, that will support you or you can turn to for advice whenever you need and that are good people, I think. I mean, I'm only, I, I I think I'm only as good as the people that I surround myself with. And I'm really, really lucky that I've had, I have really, really supportive friends and family who, you know, if I picked up the phone and, I mean, before this interview, you know, I got to call my friend and was like, oh, I'm doing a podcast. I've never done one before. Um, you know, can we just, yeah, just give me a little pep talk? And, you know, we had a little chat and then that was it. And then, but I knew that I, that they would pick up the phone and they would have a quick chat with me about it. Um, and so I'm, and I'm really lucky to have that, even during my campaign. I had so many friends and family come out and letterbox and door knock and phone bank and um, none of that, like, I just, I would not be where I am today at all if it wasn't for those people that have supported me. And also, yeah, having different uh, mentors, you know, who have done this stuff before, who have maybe been on council before and are able to give me advice on things, um, when I need it has also been really, really helpful in navigating particularly making tough decisions, um, or even just, yeah, figuring out how I, you know, what to do on council and, um, has been really helpful because it is a lot to learn in a really short amount of time.
Yeah, especially what the campaign period or?
Just even when you get elected as well, you just have to, yeah, it's just, it's a lot to learn. And I mean, I loved learning everything and uh, but it is a lot to learn and get your head around. So having people that you can chat to and ask for advice is really good as well. So I think if you are someone that is interested in being involved in politics, I think surrounding yourself with good people is just so important. And I think it helps to keep you grounded. And I think it, I think sometimes things can happen in this world where you think, oh my God, this is just the end of the world. This is the worst thing that could ever happen. And it feels like it at the time. But then having people that you can talk to and, and um, debrief with that can help you have perspective and keep you grounded and navigate through those sort of difficult periods is just the most valuable thing. And yeah, it's, whether that's friends inside or outside of politics, I think it's good to have a, a good balance of both. I think having friends. I remember a few years ago, I was, something had happened and it felt like the end of the world. And now I look back and I'm like, oh my God, that was fine.
It's just a speed bump.
Yeah, but I remember I called my friend who's not involved in politics at all. And she just said, well, like, okay, if the worst thing happens, what would happen? And then I was like, oh, well, I guess, like, I'd probably be okay in the, I mean, I'd feel not great, but
Yeah.
it would probably be fine. And I think just after talking to her, because sometimes then you go and talk to people, you know, friends that are involved in politics and you go straight into like fix it mode, but like having someone outside of it that can be, that can keep you grounded is really valuable. And then also having, uh, I think having hobbies and a life outside of, of, of this world is really good. And whether that's your pets or that's, um, you know.
I heard you're a big skydiver.
Yeah, daily. Yeah, or if it's, you know, I mean, I, I try and go for a walk every day or whether it's, you know, journaling or, um, I also like to, you know, go to Pilates, like whatever that is, but yeah, having things that are, that can keep you, um, keep you healthy and happy and, yeah.
Something that's completely separate.
Yeah, because it can be very consuming, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, and I like what you said before, because it, it, the answer does reflect what it's truly about and it's a team effort. All of it.
Yes.
Anything political or?
Totally, yeah. I don't think you can, yeah, and I think, I mean, you know, whether you're in a political party or not, um, I think people rely on the people around them. And having good people around you that can help give you advice when you need it is just so important. And yeah, I think as well, I always like, you know, even just having that, um, that thing of, is nothing in politics is personal and nothing in politics is permanent. And so I think having just someone that can remind you of that is so important because otherwise, yeah, it can feel really intense all the time. Not all the time, but a lot of the time.
That's good, because it's not a one man sport. It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, no matter how many yellow billboards you put up.
Or text messages.
Or text messages. Um, I'd love to interview you. But no, more, yeah, I guess on that, you've kind of answered that question. It's just like, how do you stay connected to your community?
Hmm.
Um.
I think as well, I mean, it's.
And, and to who you were before.
Yeah, that's, and I think a part of that is the people you surround yourself with. And also, you know, getting to go out there and getting to go to community events and getting to see the work that people are doing is so just, I mean, it's mind blowing. It's like, wow. There are so many good people out there that are doing really good work. Um, I think that helps me stay, also stay grounded, like I've said that a lot, but um, stay grounded and remember why I'm doing this. And that's honestly my favorite part of being a councillor is getting to go out there go and meet people and see the work that they do. That's my favorite thing by far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whether, e- even if it's not political thing.
Oh, yeah.
Just seeing how much, like, because I know for me personally, when you see a community event, the amount of effort it must have been involved to put it all together.
Yeah, totally. Yeah, and.
And all of these people sharing that experience.
And people just do it because they, they love their community. Like, they're not getting, you know, that, a lot of the time, these are volunteers. These are people that are putting in their own time and effort. And they're just doing it because they want to make, you know, make even just a little bit of a difference or a huge difference, or they want to make their community just that little bit better or safer or more enjoyable. And that just comes from it's just a place of giving. And I think that's so, I'm very grateful that I get to see that in my role. And that's my favorite part of being a councillor.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
So I guess with that, I have a little, that's really grounding to hear. Um, I have a line there.
Grounding bingo.
Yeah, yeah.
Should have a bingo card for this.
I should have a counter at the bottom. So I guess kind of getting towards the end of things here, but I wanted to ask, how do you think you've changed since stepping into this world? Or are you still grounded?
I think I have changed a lot. Um, I, such a good question. I've never really reflected on that.
Now's the time, live.
Oh, this is like therapy. I think it's definitely, uh, helped me have a lot of perspective on what's important. It's, I think, helped make me a better person. Um, it's, uh, I think helped me have, I mean, even just that thing that I said before of, you know, nothing's personal, nothing's permanent. Even in outside of, you know, politics, just having that mindset I think is really helpful in navigating the world. It's, you know, a lot of times when some, you know, somebody else's actions aren't necessarily a reflection of me or what I could have done differently, all the, it's usually just a reflection of who they are. And so, you know, not taking things so personally. And I don't think I ever really was someone that did take things too personally, but I think it's just really helped. Um, yeah, having a bit more perspective on that kind of stuff and just yeah, getting to meet so many different people that are doing so many really cool things has also been really inspiring and I think really motivating for me. Um, I think it's definitely made me a lot tougher as well. So I think you need to be tough.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's not easy when you're, you know, just a, a natural, you know, if you might be a sort of, someone that's not as good at sort of, um, yeah, maybe having better boundaries as well. I think it's helped me with that. And, yeah, I think also having a good balance within my own life so that I can do this stuff. Like, I think if you're not sort of um, I think I've sort of become a bit more I think I am very much more intense on like routines and good habits and that kind of stuff because of the work that I do, because it's just so busy all the time.
You have to schedule everything.
Got to schedule everything. You've got to meal prep, you've got to get your daily, get your daily steps in. You've got to, you know, clear your mind, like, you've got to go into this stuff with a clear, a clear mind and.
I think I heard you say journaling before.
Journaling, I love journaling.
Way to clear the mind.
Yeah, and I journal every single morning.
Yeah.
I will write down three.
Do you have a grateful thing as well?
I do.
Yeah, me and my partner, we do that.
Yeah, I write down three things that I'm grateful for. Um, and I probably didn't do that as much. I mean, when I was in my early, when I was a teenager and in my early twenties, I definitely wasn't doing any of that. But, yeah, I think I kind of got to a point where I was like, there is so much that I want to do and so much that I want to take on. And so how can I make life easier for future me now? Uh, that means that I can do all those things that I want to do. So like, if I've got a really busy week ahead with a lot of events and a lot of meetings, I will, I feel like I'm really exposing myself.
No, but that's, it's, you're just, if anything, you're like shining light on one of the key self-help principles, which is your whole job now in the present is to make your future easier.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, and I keep that in mind. So it's like, you know, if I'm, uh, you know, if I know I've got a really busy week ahead, it's like, um, you know, I plan out on the Sunday, I'll do my meal prep and then I'll plan out what I'm gonna wear to those events and just have them ready to go so that I don't have to think about it during the week. I can just go and then do the next thing and then really focus on what I need to do. And so I'm not worried about those things. And so I think putting a bit of time aside to then make the rest of my life easier. I, I think I'm more mindful of that and I probably have a lot better habits in that way and. And um, it's definitely made me a lot more of an organised person.
Okay.
For sure. Yeah. So I think it's changed me in that sense. And then, yeah, it's definitely, I think, made me a lot more resilient is probably the right word. And I think it, and I, and I guess that kind of goes to the whole not personal, not permanent. And that's made me more resilient to, to different things. And you've kind of got to be able to move with the pace and just, you know, keep getting through it. Um, yeah, and then I think the third one was just getting to meet so many great people. And that's also really made me feel more motivated to do what I do.
Having a schedule but being flexible to the changes.
Yeah, and, and also in that, you know, still having time to, which I probably haven't gotten the balance quite right yet. But also then, I think this is probably something that I want to have more of, which is more balance and, you know, getting to um, also have time to see friends and family a bit more. And um, it's probably been a bit harder while I've just sort of been on council at the start. But, yeah, I think having that balance right so that you're in a clear mind and you can make good decisions and you're in a better place when you're making those decisions.
What we'll do.
Alright.
Last one.
Alright.
We'll wrap it up. Um, but take your time on this. Don't, don't just give me some short-winded answer.
Okay.
And like I've said, oh, it's the end of the interview. Alright.
No, I will take my time.
Question. I get, I get, I hear it a lot when I do these interviews. Oh, that's a good one.
Okay.
Alright. If you go, if you, alright, if you could go back to the moment you first considered entering politics, what one piece of advice would you give yourself and why?
Um. I think I would say to myself, everything will work out exactly how it's meant to. And even if there are opportunities that you just like desperately, desperately want and it doesn't work out, it always, you end up, you know, you might get a better opportunity down the track. And things might feel, you know, there might be moments where you feel like really overwhelmed or like things are really unfair um that you're seeing. But just, things just always will work out for them as to. And I think it's hard to know that at the time.
Mm-hmm.
And it can feel really, um, you know, like I've had, you know, I've gone for jobs in the past that I so desperately wanted. And I thought, this is my dream job and I, I have to get this job because I, this is the only job I will ever have or the only opportunity. And then for whatever reason, it just didn't work out. And it's like, it kept not working out. And then it was like a month later. I actually got a way better opportunity. I ended up working as an advisor to a minister. And I was like, oh, actually, I'm kind of glad that didn't work out. And, yeah, I think there's so many things that can go wrong or you feel like I've, you know, even if you've made a really bad, not a bad mistake, that's probably the wrong word to say, but even if you feel like.
Just a neutral mistake.
You've just, you know, you feel like you haven't made a good decision or it always ends up working out okay. And it can feel, um, and I guess back to that point about just have good people around you and trust those people. And I think getting the balance right, which is something that I've always been really mindful of, is having, um, I think you've got to have a really good balance of internal, uh, trusting your internal judgment. But then also being able to sort of also talk externally about things. So having a good balance of internally, this is my gut feeling and this is my instinct. And this is my, my values and my principles. But then also not being afraid to go out and talk to people and get differing opinions on things and challenging your thoughts and opinions and getting advice out there. But then also not taking too much advice externally. So have a good balance of internal and external um, advice. So I don't know the right word.
You don't want to, you want to strike that balance. You don't want to overload on external.
Yeah, because you've got to trust your gut.
Yeah.
A lot. But then you've also got to be able to get external, you know, when you're talking to other people out there. You know, and you've got to consult. And I think that's so important, particularly, I think a lot of people in my community when I ran for council didn't feel like they were being consulted with and didn't feel like they were being engaged with on decisions that were being made on council. And so that was something that I really wanted to make sure that I got right and that I did. Because I think our community is so different. And, you know, there are very different parts of the community that have different needs. You know, there are, I think, a lot of people that might live in more sort of densified or inner city communities, which is wonderful. Um, but then there's also very established, um, very community-minded uh communities as well, sort of where I live. And they're really strong on, you know, sporting clubs and local businesses. And they've got that really strong sense of community that might not be elsewhere. And I feel like they kind of felt like their voices weren't being heard and that decisions were being made that didn't, um, that was kind of a one size fits all. But I don't think that that's the right way to go about when we're in, when we are, you know, trying to really steer a direction of our community. Um, I don't feel like that's the right approach. And so having that external, um, you know, consultation and engagement piece. But also, you know, engaging with people that you trust and good mentors and friends and family that you can get that really good advice from. But also trusting your gut and your own, um,
Mm-hmm.
and your own instincts. But having that balance right. Because I think if you get that balance wrong, I don't, yeah, I think it can kind of go pear-shaped.
Okay. Um, becomes less about what you're standing for and representing for your community and more about the external uh advice.
Yeah. And also, I think if you sometimes let the loud, there is a lot of loud noise sometimes. And I think if you let that loud noise cloud your judgment, then you're not going to stick to your principles and you're not going to be consistent in your values. And so I think you've also got to get that balance right as well. And it's good to get different opinions, I think. I, I, I think if you're in your echo chamber and you're not listening to differing opinions on things, then I just think you're not really reflecting your community.
No.
Yeah. So I guess those things, I'd say, uh, it all works out, uh, engage, but also trust your gut. And stick to your principles and your values and surround yourself with good people.
Beautiful.
So I'd sit her down and be like, these are all the things you've got to do.
You better be writing it down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Um, no, lovely. Alright, uh, I think that's kind of it.
Yeah. Is there any other, did you have any burning questions?
Um.
Have I covered everything?
I think you've covered a lot. I guess there was one thing, while it's rolling, I guess. I was curious about, is there anything that you don't agree with when it comes to the Labour Party?
Um, I think there's, I think you're never going to be able to be in a party where you 100% agree on everything that they've ever done.
Hmm.
But I do think all my core values, you know, Medicare, access to, to a good healthcare system, um, you know, a good public school, um, being able to support working families, having uh working rights
Hmm.
and supporting multicultural communities, they're all of my values. And so I really did feel, and you know, protecting the environment, um, and that kind of stuff was really important to me. And that's why I, and I feel like a big part of it is also that um, being a party of government, you do have to be able to bring, you know, you have to bring the majority of people along with you. And so for people that are, you know, struggling to just, you know, put food on the table and pay their bills, that's what's important to them. And so I think being in a party that, you know, has to relate to those people and has to, you have to be able to um, make policies that are going to change those lives. But then there's also people that, you know, really, really care about, um, you know, protecting the environment. And that's also really important. But, and then there's also people that, um, just, you know, don't want to have to pay hundreds of dollars to see a GP. You know, those kind of things and, or just want to be able to work and then also be able to afford taking their kids to childcare. Um, and I think you've got to be able to get that balance right, especially if you're a party of government.
Hmm.
Um, and I think I really value that. I think I, um, think you've got to be able to bring people along. You know, when you're, when you are progressive and you want to make these progressive policies, you've got to be able to bring people along the journey with you. Otherwise, you're not going to, you know, you're not going to be able to form government. You're not going to be able to make those decisions. And then potentially the wrong people might, um, get in power and make decisions that are even worse, you know. So I am a big believer in that. I think you've got to be able to bring people along with you. You've got to be able to listen to your community. And you have to be able to balance people's differing needs. Like, um, yeah, I think that's how I feel about it.
Okay, that, it at least hits eighty to ninety, eighty to ninety percent and that's okay.
Yeah, and I think no one's.
Or aligned, eighty to ninety percent aligned.
Yeah, and things aren't probably going to be perfect, but, um, you know, you can't let, what is it? Perfect be, is it?
Was it, you can't, you can't.
The enemy of the good? Was it the other way around?
You can't let perfect be the enemy of good, I guess. I think it's something like that. Or we do a thing with, in boat building, it's like that. It's just like, well, it's good. It's not going to be perfect. You know, like, it's, yeah.
Yeah, and you've got to be able to, I think, take people along that journey with you. Um.
Oh, sorry, no. Don't let perfect get in the way of done.
I like that.
At least it's done.
At least it's done. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there is a long way to go, but that's just, I guess, part of, you know, being a, being in a party of government.
But in general, progress is slow.
Progress is, yeah, exactly. Yeah, and I think there's not always going to be issues that, uh, sometimes there's also nuance in issues, you know, like something that might affect one person in one way, you know, might affect someone a different way. And so how do you balance that with it, you know? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think getting that balance right is important because then I think people just, they just want to feel like they're heard and like they're being brought along the journey too.
It's almost like government is compromise.
Crazy.
Crazy. Um, on that beautiful compromising note.
Yeah.
I think we'll end it. I will thank you for your time.
Thank you. This was so fun.
Yeah, thank you again.
Really love it to chat.
Great to hear, funnita.
Bye.